Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Hole for May 22nd. And if you could please call the rule.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussain.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmembers Fitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Eight members present.
Okay, thank you. We have the minutes from May 11th and May 15th. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I would make a motion to move the minutes from May 11th and May 15th as written.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. This is an opportunity for public comment, but I would like to make a statement before we have public comment. I do know that there has been conversation in the public concerning the $1.9 million that is part of the mayor's veto that was re-appropriated. I want the public to understand that this was not money that was hidden in the budget. This was an error that happened at the...
Oh shit.
This... We will have order. This money was not hidden in the budget, but this money was part of some last-minute adjustments that the internal auditor made based on conversations that we had. It was not caught by her or the budget controller until after the passage. So if anyone is to blame for the $1.9 million not being allocated, it is I. I'm the one that gave the council members the budget information that they had, that they worked on, and so I am totally the one responsible for that. So with that, we are now opening it up for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make public comment, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
The podium where the microphone is.
The phone is, please.
To your left a little bit more. Don't come over here.
My name is Kyle David Carmody, junior of the United States Marine Corps and Navy. I would like to talk to Ms. Hassan, councilmember, third ward, about the crime going on in the city. I've been beat up three times, sir, because of you! I'm tired of getting beat up as a veteran. You understand me? That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Good evening, Stan Shuck. I just wanted to talk about the budget and how we're filling holes with vacancies and how that, you know, it's been an ongoing thing for as long as I can remember. I mean, literally. I don't know when the last time all those positions were filled. Seems that HR doesn't have the ability to fill the working man's job, but can get an administrative job filled in days, you know, in a week. It's amazing. And I gotta wonder, you know, you've heard me talk about the fee and the recycling, and I gotta wonder, those jobs probably haven't been completely filled in a decade, I would venture to say, all six positions. So that money, I gotta wonder, is that money also for those positions being used to fill the gaps in the budget? Because that's fee money. That's directly for the six seasonals in recycling compost. So once again, if that money is being reallocated somehow to fill those holes through empty positions, once again, that's co-mingling. You're taking a fee for a service and you're using it for a completely other purpose. And the fact that you just raised it again to pay for all the things you're not doing, I don't get that. You raised the fee to pay for all the things you're not doing. But I guess if you're paying the employees more and you don't hire them, well then you got more money in the kitty. I'll talk a little more at the council meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Two quick things on the budget. One relates to the warming and cooling centers and the funding for that and the potential for a veto override, et cetera, et cetera. All I'm gonna say about that is that, in my view, cooling centers and warming centers' availability at the time of need is an essential service this city has got to provide. I don't care how you fund it, roll the dice. Find the money. Do it. Period. Second, I understand that under the current proposed plan, the Parks and Rec budget would be cut 33% for operational expenditures, with the understanding that when the fiscal year ends and money rolls back in from over, for money that hasn't been spent that was allocated, that that would then get put back into their budget and they would be made whole. So I am counting on that. I am depending on that happening, and I encourage all of you to make sure that it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Michael Lynn. Thank you, Carol, for the, I guess, the explanation on the $1.9 million. Still in here, and I hope you can state what's gonna happen with that money. It wasn't allocated, so is it gonna be allocated? Are you guys gonna have a vote on that? Or does it just go back into, again, as Stan says, the kitty? It's a real big issue that we have in Lansing, as he said, and we've been saying, and I've been saying here for three years now, these unfilled positions and that, them funds that aren't able to be allocated by you all is a big problem. I do wanna bring attention to the fact that the mayor actually signed off on this, because you and him both said you guys made an agreement. You said that you weren't gonna go against your word to him and the original budget. The only thing that changed from that point, that you and him decided that budget was clear and good to go forward, was that two amendments came. So the mayor's response to that now in conversation, I believe, is downright traumatic. It's a lie. It puts this whole council in a disavantage. It really kinda makes you all look terrible, as if you guys went out and tried to take monies away from all these departments and the mayor had nothing to do with that and he got sprung on him. That's the type of behavior that I keep talking about, that we need to have somebody from council telling the truth. You know, I brought Ryan on the show yesterday to kinda talk about that aspect, but, Carol, you said, and I was disappointed here, but you guys had your meeting together as leaders of this council and administrator executive board and came together with an agreement on a budget that you brought forward, and you said you weren't gonna bring in amendments, you weren't gonna do anything to it, because you gave your word to the mayor. And the only thing that changed was money came out of his office by two amendments that came in. And then he goes in the media and says, over and over again, like the whole council is making this city not be able to run. It's a lie. It's an ethics violation, in my opinion. You can't just keep lying to the people, just outwardly, with all these different outlets that he goes to, WILEX, LSJ, so on and so forth, stone cold lying. So I'd expect somebody from the council on the dice today to express how that went. Let's talk about that as you guys vote this through. I also would expect that after we got six votes on that, then we have six votes again to override today. There's no explanation. You guys all went through the budget, you all looked at it, you found the issues, you understand where the money is overspent, you guys came to a conclusion, you voted on it. That vote should just stand. We shouldn't even have a conversation about that aspect. There shouldn't be any conversation. It should just be clear cut, let's rock with it. You got an up or down vote. And then I imagine we have to decide what happens with the $1.9 million. A secondary to that is this overspending. After you guys approve this budget, excuse me, after you override this and approve the budget you guys allocated, you need to bring Shelby Fairback in and find out where money is being spent. You guys shutting down those operating budgets was the smartest thing you could've did. Let's see how much they actually need to live. Already spending more money on gas than they need to. Already spending more money on paper and pencils. There's someplace we could do it cheaper. We have to start figuring out how to save money. I'm just a citizen. I'm not a mayor or a council member, and I can figure that part out. So let's stand tall on this arrangement we got here. Override it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
So, you probably already know my name. I am Nicholas Wayne Zandy. I'm from the second ward in the Old Denver neighborhood. I've gotta make my statement very clear on the budget. While I don't think that the city budget is perfect by any means, I mean, cuts to the Parks and Recreation budget, I'm downright against that, but cuts being made to the... But there are some parts of the budget that I do agree with, like cutting part of the mayor's budget. It's definitely overspent, and it should be better used for other departments. And the fact that, from what I've heard, there was a deal made between council president Wood and mayor Shore that the budget would go through, but guess what? He vetoed it, and we've gotta have a discussion on overriding it. That's not just lying or anything. In some cases, that's considered treason, going back on your word. That is just... I have... I mean, I knew the mayor's office was corrupt, but I didn't know they were this corrupt and this needy of money that they really just don't need. It just boggles my mind, and it just angers me to no end. I mean, I do for one support this budget veto getting overridden because of that, because honestly, I cannot stand for someone going back on their word on several things. And, well, I appreciate Ms. Wood standing up and being accountable. I'm not going to appreciate Mr. Shore not being a... not giving his word on his issue, and I can't... And he needs to be accountable for that, too. And also, there are parts of the whole budget thing that have negatively affected certain offices, some of which I will not discuss, because again, that's personal, but you can look that up for yourselves. All I can say is, we just... We need to get this all written to show the mayor that he cannot go back on his word and he should... Just because a certain amount of money is being taken from his office that he really doesn't need. That's all I wanna say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Hello, Erica Lynn. I'll try to make it quick. I really just wanted to take the opportunity to talk to you all. I appreciate councilmember Wood kinda giving that clarification on that, but that wasn't necessarily my biggest concern. I think the biggest concern that I have right now is the misconceptions that are being put out about how this situation came to be. I think it's really important to illustrate the fact that there was a lot of work done to put that budget that was put forth, to put that together. There was a lot of work done, and we heard about it. And whether we agree or disagree with how that was done between council president Wood and mayor Shore, it got done, and it was a collective. It was worked on jointly, was worked on together, and it was passed by council. So it's really unfathomable to think that, at this point now, we're saying that that was just all incorrect, that was wrong, we just disagree with it. I understand there's gonna be feelings about, you know, when there's cuts to a particular department, especially it's one of your own, but name that. I, for one, as a citizen, regardless of whether I believed in every single cut that was done, right? Whatever the operations were to different departments, that's here and there. What I did appreciate is the time and the effort that was spent to put that together. I believe it was done in good faith. I believe that there were hard decisions that needed to be made, and those decisions were made. There was also a contingency plan put in place, that they can come back and ask for money and be able to substantiate that, and there's funds that we know are going to be available for that. So I felt good about that. So again, I trust the time, the effort that was put into that. I also appreciated the amendments that were put through. I think that those amendments, those were a showcase of listening. Listening to the budget presentations that were done, listening to the answers that were given, listening to the non-answers that were given. So again, I trusted that process, and I felt that there were decisions, strategies, cuts, amendments, all made based on listening to the people, based on listening to the people that sat here at this table to talk to you all. That's how a budget process is supposed to go. It's never gone like that for the last four years that I've been a part of it or watched any part of it. Felt really great. What we're doing today now, now I'm a little fearful. This is a very opportune time. This is where we're looking to you all to say, we want and need to have trust, credibility, transparency with you all. I would expect nothing less than what you did the last time around, knowing that you all did this process in good faith and put amendments forward, put things forward. I would expect nothing different than the same exact votes that we got last time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Hi, I'm Libby Rice, fourth ward, and I just wanted to say ditto on what Erica Lynn said. I've been trying to follow this process. I do appreciate that some things were made much clearer and that there was an appearance... It appeared there was a response to the public concerns, so I thank you all for that. I still have deep concerns about how we spend money in this city and what we think of as priorities, but, you know, those are my own thoughts. So anyway, I hope everything comes out well, but I'm a little concerned with, again, the process that has been followed. It has been very difficult to follow, and especially this very last stage. So I guess I feel Erica said it much better, but I am totally on board with how she sees things. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Good evening, Farhan Sheikh Kumar. The reason why you guys was able to mysteriously find $1.9 million is because this whole process was rushed. We have a mayor who used to walk across the street at the state capitol, where everything is rushed, where thousands of bills are passed and nobody reads it, nobody looks at it. He has millions of deputy mayors even didn't look at it. We have eight members of the city council. Nobody caught that. We have an auditor, nobody... She didn't even see that. And so, to me, it shows a lack of transparency. We don't know what's going on as far as this budget goes. There is no way you can just find $1.9 million out of nowhere. He knew what was happening. He knew there was gonna be some cuts, and that's something that he put to the side in order to protect his office. And so personally, I think we need to start this whole process over. Like, there's no way you guys can just pass an incomplete budget and then come back to us and say, hey, there's $1.9 million that we found, and we're gonna just let the mayor do whatever he wants with it. That is unacceptable. And I also read the letter that the mayor wrote as far as his veto goes, where he says that he feels attacked, that his budget is being cut. First of all, this budget belongs to the people of Lansing. This is our money, not Andy Shore's. And if I have to choose between her salary and saving a life during these winter times where it's freezing outside, I'm gonna choose that life over her salary ten times, twice on Sundays. It's no-brainer. We need these warming centers. Period. We don't need multiple deputy mayors. I understand the mayor is used to being a state rep where bills die down and barely make it to the state house, barely make it to the senate, and at the time that he was the state rep, we had a Republican governor, so nothing ever got passed. And so that's why he has a deputy mayor, assistant deputy mayor, assistant assistant deputy mayor, so that he's able to cut ribbons, he's able to take pictures, he's able to endorse candidates for city council, so he can put his thumb on the scale and pick and choose who gets to serve on the city council, which should be up to Lansing residents and not to him. And so it's time that we cut his budget, it's time that we put that money back into the community, it's time that we meet the demands of Lansing residents, and if that means some of his money being sacrificed, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Good evening, council. Thank you for all of your time today. I'm Tamar Carter. I'm a Lansing resident here for quite some time now, over two decades, and I just wanted to share the information that was received last week. I do feel very confident in my background as a financial experience manager, and I believe that every line item is important. And so with the budget, I see it daily. I know that members come in, and if they're outside of their income or their debt or their income, we address it. And I do feel that right now, there is a... This is a pivotal time where we need to address that we're over the budget. And so with that being said, I do feel like the funds that were amended, or the amendments that were presented last week should be sound, and it should be an opportunity for us to have those warming stations. I feel like that is a great compromise for our constituents, and that is what I've been hearing for quite some time. So I do hope that you stand your ground and you make the right choice and decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will move on into our agenda. The first item that we have is setting a public hearing for re-adopting and codifying the ordinances. This is something that we had said that we would do every year as part of our fiscal budget, and so with that, I would turn to Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So I would move to set in the public hearing for re-adopting the codified ordinances for June 12th.
We have a motion. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. The next item that we have is the annual training requirement for all cities' boards and commissions' trainings on ethics ordinances, conflict of interest, and the Open Meetings Act. This is, again, something that this council had passed a resolution last year and wanted to make sure that this was something that was done on an annual basis, and so we have asked that we would pass this ordinance each year to make sure that this did occur. So before we get into discussion, I'd ask Vice President Garza to make a motion.
All right, thank you, Council President. I move the resolution for the annual training, the commission training on ethics ordinance, conflict of interest, and Open Meeting Act.
Okay. Are there any questions on this? I guess my only question would be to the city attorney. Do we have confirmation that the boards and commissions have received that training?
We have. We have in the past. I'd have to give you a chart of who did it when, but it's our intent that all boards and commissions would receive the training.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for the city attorney on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Next is the fiscal year budget 2023 veto override, and I would recognize councilmember Hussain.
All right, so that we can have a discussion, I will move the fiscal year budget 2023, sorry, 2024 veto override.
We have a motion before us. Before we move into this, I would like to recuse myself from this vote. As I explained to councilmembers before, I receive... The agency I work for, RSVP, receives funding from HRCS. I have a current contract with them, and it has been recommended that I receive a contract for the next fiscal year as well. So I am asking to be recused.
So just a quick clarification. So you do have an active contract in place.
I have an active contract with them.
And it's been recommended that you have an active contract for fiscal year 2024.
Correct. And part of those contracts are... Those are used for match money with the federal government, which I have to fill out an ethics violation... An ethics clause with them. I am not allowed to have it be perceived by the Office of Integrity with the federal government that I have helped in any way to appropriate those dollars. If that is deemed that they determined that that might be a factor, they will reduce our funding, and that will affect over 400 volunteers that are volunteering as part of RSVP, our seniors, not only the people that they also volunteer with. So that's my motion. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I know we have to vote on the recusal, and I would not support a recusal for a few reasons. One is that we're not really digging into the budget like we did as far as each department was concerned. We are basically either voting yes or no, whether we are going to support the mayor's veto or override the veto. We're not trying to transfer funds, we're not trying to do anything besides that. And really, I mean, if everybody took a recusal from one of the departments or anything, we might as well not have a vote, because that's really the easiest way out if some people recuse themselves, and then there can't be any type of supermajority. So I understand politically why, you know, someone may wanna recuse himself, but for this, I don't think it's necessary, given that we are a yes or no for a veto or not, not whether we should give HRCS more or less money, for example, or anything with your contract specifically, 54A, any of that. We already did that. We already recused ourselves for the main passage, but now it's just per the charter whether we should stand or not stand, and I think that a recusal would be the easy way out.
I understand that that's your opinion, councilmember Jackson, but I am not gonna err on the possibility that funding would be denied from the federal government to our agency because of that. And they've made it abundantly clear, and if you remember, we even had to pass a special ethics ordinance for HUD with Joan Jackson because of some issues with the former director. And so when it comes to playing around with them, I'm not willing to endanger my agency for that. That's why I'm asking for recusal, because in this document, it does have HRCS mentioned twice. So with that, councilmember Fitzley, this is to my question. Okay?
Thank you, Madam President. And let's be clear about what has happened here, okay? So the veto now contains language that puts dollars back, the operating dollars, back into the budget. That's where the conflict comes in. We are voting on a budget, per se. I work for an environmental trust. We have property in the city of Lansing. I changed my employment contract to be on council. My employment contract specifically states that I cannot be involved in anything regarding economic development and planning. This is not the easy way out. I'm quite frankly, quite PO'd about it, because this money was put back in, this money that was agreed to between President Wood and the mayor. I mean, you know, we're hearing in the media that it was the council's budget, that the council's budget. It wasn't the council's budget, because the council's budget was a 10% cut across the board, except for police and fire. That was the council's budget. This was an agreement between President Wood and the mayor, and now the veto contains, just throws that agreement and puts all that money back in. That brings into play my department and my conflict of interest and Carol's conflict of interest, so it is not the easy way out. This is horrible. This is a horrible position for councilmembers to be in, because we voted in good faith on a budget that contained reductions in operations. a budget that contained reductions in operations. The amendments, fair game, fair game to veto. But that budget was agreed upon with the administration and Carol and President Wood. And now we're here now because that money was put back in operations, Carol and I are in conflict. I'm not losing my job, my day job because of this. And that's the risk I take if I don't recuse myself. Do I, am I happy about it? And I'll have more comments to say after we vote on her recusal? No. But that's just the fact of how this thing was put together. I would have never thought that the operations stuff would have been part of the veto, but here we are. I thought that we had agreed that that would come later as budget carryovers, but that didn't happen. It's part of the veto now, and so we have to deal with that. And Carol and I have to deal with it. It doesn't matter how we feel about it. It is what it is. So I take exception to it being called a way out. I'm pissed about it. It is not because I'm not losing my job over counsel. So we need to stop that. We need to stop that.
So we have a motion before us for my recusal. And yes?
Just to clarify.
Can you turn your microphone off, please?
Just anticipating what may be happening today. We did an analysis on the conflict of interest and the required number of votes. If there is no conflict of interest demonstrated, then the matter has a higher standard of six votes. But if there is a conflict raised, all members present must vote except for the person who raises the conflict, and the result is a simple majority. So in other words, if you have seven left, four would recuse when there's a conflict raised.
But that has... Councilmember Spitzley.
That has nothing to do with the veto. To me, that's just, we know that you need a supermajority. We're talking about ultimately whether the veto is upheld or not, and you need six votes for that.
You need, I think he's saying that it used to be, it would be six votes for a conflict of interest.
If there is no conflict of interest raised...
I'm raising.
No, just a recusal.
Okay.
Six votes. But if a conflict of interest is raised, like what you have said...
Yes.
And what Councilmember Spitzley, then it's a majority of those left without you voting, for example.
Okay.
For the recusal or for the...
For excusing your vote.
Okay. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, the recusal means nothing. We're going to, we need to be recused. End of story. You know, that's it. But we're trying to make sure that, so when we, if we're voted to be recused, we do that. You still need six votes to override the veto.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not addressing that. I'm only addressing a clarification of the conflict because it was no secret that there may be these issues that are coming up today.
Okay. So you take the gavel.
Okay. So I got the gavel. Okay. So now, with that being said, I move to call the vote and question to recuse Councilwoman Wood.
Do we have a question or is it a roll call vote?
Is it a roll call or is it all in favor?
You can ask for...
All those in favor, please state by saying aye to recuse Councilwoman Wood.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I also need to be recused. My employment contract does not allow me to vote on any budgetary items for economic development and planning. I just can't. And I've done it for the last seven years, eight years. I've recused myself from economic development and planning because I can't do it. That's just the condition of my contract. It doesn't make me happy. It just is.
All right. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, President Wood. I just need some clarification. So we have the budget. We made amendments, and then the veto, from my understanding, would be to veto what we already brought forward.
No. The mayor, the mayor made a veto. He can line item our budget, and that's what he did, as well as re-appropriating the 1.9 million dollars.
So is that a separate, I mean, that's why I'm...
That's all, it was all in his letter, so it was all in one section.
All right. It's an up or down vote. We can't parse it out.
That's correct.
Could you, Jim, I'm sorry, and I mean, I'm out of order, and I know that. Jim, could you explain what's going on here? Because we talked Saturday morning at Lansing.
Okay.
The question cannot, we've analyzed the charter for this vote, and the question is a simple question, is should the veto be overridden? And that is a six-vote item. You cannot divide this question. I don't know if that explains it. It's pretty straightforward.
That's it? Yeah, I'm good.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Brown, or not?
Yes, thank you, President Wood.
All right. What we have before us now is a motion to recuse Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah. So on the last point, I struggled with that because essentially what the mayor did was he vetoed something that was, I mean, we never appropriated anything. And so I really struggled with the fact that that wouldn't be supplemental too, and that that's part of. The second piece is I really struggled with what the mayor did. It was crafty on his end to back these dollars back into H R C S and also economic development and planning. I did some digging over the weekend with regards to both of the conflicts of interest. Carol's, I'll be frank, seems obvious to me. There is an active contract in place. There is also a recommendation for an active contract next year. I think that is not a perceived conflict of interest. I think that is a real conflict of interest, and I think that puts in jeopardy funding for her organization. I've always struggled, frankly, Patricia, with your conflict of interest. I don't understand how there's anything more there than perceived. I think of, as an example, Councilman Garza. If Councilman Garza was to recuse himself on every incentive, because as an example, it might end up being a 303 job, he would not be able to vote on anything. So I don't think we can anticipate that. I think what we do is when those things arise, we disclose. And then I think the other aspect of it is, at that point, we recuse ourselves on that individual item. So I don't believe I'm going to, there's just no way, because I don't, again, because I've never been incredibly comfortable approving those recusals, I don't see anything more than maybe a perceived conflict of interest. And I'm not going to, with all due respect, I'm not going to let this mayor back the city council into that corner where basically what he did was completely erase any opportunity for a check and balance within the city government. Thanks.
Councilmember Spitzley.
That's fine. I respect what you said, but I signed a contract. That was the only way I could serve, is to sign a contract to say that I would not do that, and I would not act on it. So it is, I can show you the contract, where my work contract has been altered. It is what it is. You know, that's how I was able to serve. So if it comes down to it and you don't vote my recusal, I will leave the room because I cannot vote on this and then go back to my trustee and say, well, you know, they didn't vote me in for recusal. So I'll just leave the room.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, President Wood. I guess my question would be to, with this situation coming up, my question would be, I guess, to you, if what Councilwoman Spitzley is saying is correct, how is she the chair of Economic Development and Planning Committee? So that's why I'm concerned now, because if it is a conflict, then how is she the chair with different projects or whatever it may be? Because if that's the case, then she, I mean, I'm not saying you are.
No, you're right. You're right.
But it would be that if, let's say, her company has projects they're trying to do, she's the chair of economic development, she could be voting all types of projects out the way, and then five years down the road, her company has that going on.
Councilmember...
And she's the chair.
And that's a fair question. I respect that. No, I would recuse.
I didn't know that.
Right, no. I would recuse myself, and I would give you as the vice chair the gavel, and I would not vote. That's the deal I made. I'm on the chair of economic development and planning because I have knowledge of economic development and planning, and I think it helps. But if there's a vote that impacts my, what I'm doing, or a money vote, I recuse myself. I've done it before. So if you want me to, I will step down as chair today. I formally renounce the chair of economic development planning. You are now the chair.
Well, first of all, that's something that council president does. If you are giving, tending me your resignation on...
I resign as chair of economic development and planning.
Okay. Then I will take that under advisement. All right. Are there other comments? See, okay. All right. All those in favor of recusal of Councilmember Spitzley say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So...
No, we don't need a roll call?
No. It didn't go through. The way I counted.
Yeah.
Okay.
It didn't go through.
Yeah. Okay. So that takes us to the veto. And is there someone that would like to speak to this? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. My first question is to the internal auditor. So with the veto and with money's put back in, where are my warming center dollars?
As I understand it, there's no warming center dollars in the budget with the veto.
Okay. So I understand from the letter that the mayor sent, saying that he was going to veto, he mentions the $800,000 that State Senator Sarah Anthony has championed for this effort. And I think Sarah Anthony's great. She's a rock star. She does, she's awesome. But the mayor's been in the legislative process, and so have I. And when it gets to the House, we have House members all over the state of Michigan that have priorities as well. And he cannot guarantee 100% that my centers will be funded with that. He doesn't even, he can't even guarantee 100% that the money will be allocated once it goes through appropriations, once it gets on the floor, and he cannot guarantee that it will survive amendments. So what I'm asking right now, as I'm sitting here, for support from the council to make sure, oh, my second question. So we have carryovers, right, that come out sometime after June 12th? And does H R C S have carryovers?
They, we will be getting carryforwards because we have to have them acted on by the 26th of June.
So do we have those carryover numbers yet?
I haven't seen any numbers yet.
So once again, we'll probably get them the week before at the last minute. So I don't know if there'll be carryover dollars enough for my warming centers. Is that what I'm hearing right now?
Yeah. Yes.
So my question to council is that when these carryover dollars come forward, will you champion with me for dollars for the warming center? You don't have to say yes or no. I'm just asking everybody. And Mayor, I need you to champion me for warming dollars, for warming center dollars.
Councilmember Spitzley, just so, I know you know this, but I'm going to remind you again. And that is, when an amendment comes through on the budget, it's the same as what we're going here. It's an up or down.
I know.
We don't get to move money around on that amendment.
So my warming centers are out there, or I'm sorry, because it's not my warming centers, it's the people's warming centers. The people's warming centers that I've been asking for for years are now at the whim of the legislature across the street because unless money is put in right now, we have no money, no place over for warming centers, for my, for warming centers. Is that correct, Emily?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. With what is in front of us right now?
I understand that. All right. So there will be carryforwards. Is that correct?
Yes, we have to receive carryforwards.
Okay. And again, you don't know how much the carryforward will be for H R C S at this point because we haven't gotten those numbers.
Right.
Have you asked for those numbers?
Yes. And there's also a placeholder resolution in the packet right now that says we're supposed to receive the numbers within two to three weeks of when we got that, which was last week.
So we will get them a week before the 12th, roughly?
Yeah, I guess it depends on finance.
So I will reiterate what I heard for public comment, that, you know, there's been language consistently in the media, in the media and in this veto letter, that this is council's budget. And it was my understanding that council's budget contained a 10% across the board cut, and that this was a budget that was agreed upon between President Wood and the mayor. So I don't know how it's being portrayed in the media as council's budget. We approved the budget, but the budget was agreed upon between the president and the mayor. And the fact that it's being portrayed in the press and the media as council's budget is disingenuous to me. And it reminds me of the ARPA dollars when we were getting calls about ARPA dollars.
Madam President, a point of order. I just recall, if you're not, oh, you are able to. Thank you.
Never mind.
Can I finish now?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. It reminds me of the ARPA dollars, that when the ARPA dollars were out, we were getting calls that the mayor was telling people that council cut the ARPA dollars. And here we are again in the media where I'm seeing that the mayor is saying that this is council's budget. It's not. It is an agreement between the president and the mayor. And the fact that this veto undoes that is a problem. So I also noticed that the budget did not replace the 33% operations for parks. That was also, you know, in the media about how important parks was, you know, how it's going to be detrimental to parks. But that wasn't in there because he said that the 1.9 million dollars, that was, that is now used to backfill. So is there going to be a budget correction for parks? Or is just parks can just hang out there? Because that was the only department I see that wasn't restored. I just, you know, I'm in, I'm in a no-win situation here, you know, and, you know, I feel a little manipulated. I'm sitting here, I cannot vote on the, I cannot vote on this budget because of the economic development and planning portion put in there. I'm really upset that a budget that was agreed upon, I get, you know, the vetoes, you know, the amendments are fair game. If you want to veto the amendments, veto them. But to then go back and undo an agreement that you made with council president is a problem. Because I could have put forth the amendment I wanted, which was $250,000 out of the H R C budget for a warming center, and that'd be in the budget right now. It'd be in the budget right now. But I agreed not to put forth any amendments because I trusted the process, and I got screwed. So I'm not very happy right now. I can't vote. So here I am, I'm not getting my warming centers because I can't trust the legislature because I've been in the legislature, and I've been there late nights when things have changed, and I can't vote.
Councilmember Hussein, and then I have Councilmember Jackson. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I think folks are clear, but I'm not sure that everybody's clear in terms of what's happened. So with regard to the two amendments that Mr. Cost brought forth, that was vetoed, as well as, well, I'm sorry, the amendments that Councilman Cost brought forth were vetoed. And then what ended up happening was, we essentially had revenues exceed expenditures by some 1.9 million dollars. And because of that, what this mayor decided to do was move that into, or back it into operating budgets, some that were cut. Again, I think it was politically pretty savvy to back it into the departments that he backed them into. But there are still a number of cuts to operating budgets that were agreed upon between the mayor and Carol. What I would have preferred this mayor to do, when catching that 1.9 million dollars, is to actually then put that into our rainy day fund, with an understanding that, folks, it might be raining next year because of this, but I'm going to stand by the agreement I made with Carol, the spirit of that agreement, and we're going to put that into the rainy day fund. That's obviously not what happened here. So I just wanted to make sure that we kind of had a sound understanding. We had looked at up to, I think it was about 4.6 million dollars in reduction... We had looked at up to, I think it was about $4.6 million in, in reduction from the mayor's budget. And what this now does is takes us, takes us down to about $2.6 million of a reduction from the mayor's budget. That being said, I am, since it's my time to talk, I am going to support the, the override of the veto. And specifically, I wanted to speak to the mayor. There's been a lot of, a lot of commentary out there about how we went after your budget. And frankly, the reason I went after, or we went after your budget is because we were hoping you were the leader we were, we deserved to have. There were a number of, when your departments came up, there were a number of positions and, and quite a bit of spending in respective departments that I absolutely was interested in cutting. But what I didn't want to do is, is go after them, go after those line items without having conversations with, with you, without being able to have deeper conversations with them, cutting certain services or maybe positions that are absolutely critical. And I thought if I was in that chair, I'd be the first one to take a cut. As a matter of fact, City Council, most recently, we took 10% pay cuts. We cut our office holder accounts. We cut our miscellaneous budget as part of this budget. We cut our internal auditors, operating. So we didn't go after you personally. Did we expect shared sacrifice? Absolutely. As a matter of fact, when we took those 10% pay cuts, you and I had a conversation, and I thought that you were gonna take, take a 10% pay cut, and I thought that you were gonna talk to your departmental leaders about taking a 10% pay cut. There was supposed to be that shared sacrifice. Frankly, when you look up at this dais, there's only one person that has not had any measure of sacrifice within their, their own shop. And that's why we went after it, that's my opinion. And it, it, okay.
Mayor, you're out of order.
Exactly, thank you. So, so it, I was just, I was surprised because the night of, and I get you have a visceral reaction, but when you said, I, I, my mouth, my mouth was agape when you said, you didn't go after anybody else's budget, but you went after mine. And then you doubled down on that in this letter, and I'm thinking, this guy is the, I mean, he's supposed to be the general. He's supposed to be looking out for all of those departments. He's supposed to be looking out for all of those frontline employees. And I would think that you would want this body to come after your office first. Particularly when we've added capacity. We've added 3-1-1, we've added Lansing Connect, we've grown Departments of Neighbors and Citizen Engagement. And because of that, you've had to change. Fiscal year, I think 2018, is when you brought to this body this idea of a citizen advocate. And at that time, it might've been fiscal year 17, in any event, at that time, we got it. It was needed. But as we've added capacity, right, I would think that you would be looking at efficiencies, you'd be looking at redundancies. As a matter of fact, that's why we brought a CSO onboard, and you would be taking a look at, okay, how can we? And you might think that's a drop in the bucket, but it's really not. It's, and, and, and bottom line, it's a reflection of our priorities. And so when I approved the $150,000, it really was to, to pare back just a little bit in terms of, you know, the money being spent in your office and the positions within your office. Because again, I, as we've become more efficient and as we've grown capacity in other departments, you can tell by the title changes, and with all due respect, when they come down in the well and they can't tell us what they do, that's a problem. Well, it happened. It happened. Now, if this does not go through, my expectation, it, to me, everybody's, I notice, my expectation is that we have clear deliverables, outcomes, that we're able to talk about, what our job description is, what we're doing on a regular basis. I would hope that, again, we're starting annual evaluations because we have got to have accountability with regards to these tax dollars that, that are spent. The, the other piece is, I wanna be very clear that the cuts that Mr. Cost brought forth were absolutely a representation of what we heard, whether we were out at constituent contact meetings, whether it was at the podium, emails. I mean, that, it's an absolute representation. So if there is work being done, and if there's some, some, some value in having these positions, you guys gotta do a hell of a lot better job articulating that, conveying that to the community because they are telling us they want your budget cut. Thank you.
I have Councilmember Jackson and then Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, just a few things. I was debating, do I wanna speak now, even though I have a feeling I know how the vote goes or at commu, or at the main council, but since now's the time. First, the deal that we heard about between Council President and Mr. Mayor Shore. I have never liked those type of things, even though I do understand and appreciate that that's how a lot of this works at all levels, even our little local level, all the way up to the federal level, that people meet behind closed doors and they work things out. Since my time on council, I haven't asserted myself or been one of those people that's in those back rooms figuring out what's gonna happen before we get here. And as far as the actual decision to cut the operating, I heard there was a 10% across the board. When I first heard that, I was surprised because I remember I did an amendment back that said it was gonna be a certain percentage across the board to get a certain amount of money for something, but it was vehemently shot down that we don't just do percentage cuts because that's not what we do, it has to be. So then, as far as what got cut with the Parks and Rec and everything, my only comment on that is that because of politics, police, fire, and public service were not even able to be on the discussion because nobody is gonna, that's elected, is gonna say or get, have some bait used against them that says, "Oh, I supported something that took two out of the 20 vacancies away from the police that they are not able to fill to save that money." Even though it makes sense, nobody's gonna do it. I would've, and I tried before, but it's not gonna pass because of the politics. If we were serious about trying to find a lot of money for our rainy day, we would open all doors and not have like certain things that's off limits because of politics. Now, the reason why I do appreciate that deal that President Wood made is because of the good faith attempt to address our financial situation that's really bad. Our, say, structural deficit, or say, spending more than we bring in, however you wanna call it, that exists, and when the mayor said, or his cabinet said that they did not have any plan for that, knowing that we just spent up all our ARPA money on trying to make ourselves whole again, but not having a plan for something that we've known is a problem for so many years, I didn't, I didn't like how that sat. So I didn't create too much problems with, with those operational cuts, even though I love Parks and Rec, again, coach my kids. My kids play all the different sports. The youth sports program's amazing, and I'm, I hate to even think that a program or two or, or whatever's gonna happen is gonna happen. But I'm also, don't wanna be here next year when it's even worse and people are like, well, why didn't you do anything last year? So that's why I'm okay with that. I think that all of this is also a good reason why people should consider supporting a city manager form of government because we're arguing about the mayor's cabinet and budget and his personnel of, again, there's the mayor, there's the deputy mayor, there's the vice mayor, and then there's the chief of staff, which are all very high-salary positions. And if we had a, a city manager, ideally, none of those positions would need to be filled because we would have somebody making those decisions that's really an expert, that doesn't have that same political background as far as why decisions are made and really try to work for the people. So when I heard, I wasn't here last week saying I'm going to cut the mayor's personnel budget, but then, once I heard the amendment and it included the warming centers, which is not a new situation for Lansing, so many council people, so many people from the public has came in every year since I've been in council, five, six years, and it's been a problem every winter. And we still, we live in Michigan, we know it's gonna be a problem, and we know it's getting worse. So to not have anything lined up, I mean, again, what, I don't care where it comes from, and if it's the mayor's personnel budget, then so be it. Because I also think we brought in the CSO a few years back where we couldn't do any other things with the budget. You remember, we go through the whole process. And the one thing we came out with, again, it was worked out, I wasn't a part of the workout, but it happened, is to bring a CFO on so that that person could address the structural deficit and try to find efficiencies, try to make it so like this day never, never would have to come. And again, you know, as far as the democracy here, I know we got our charter, and I know that, you know, we got this veto thing, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it sounds like it's not much of a vote, which I don't appreciate just because, you know, we're our eight-person council with our thing of trying to either stick together or, you know, pass a budget or whatever, and ultimately, you know, it's just gonna go back to the strong mayor system. And again, it's nothing personal to anybody. Everybody's doing what they think is best. I just think that we need those warming centers, and I think that we should stand with the budget. And I think that the mayor's personnel, since that's what we're talking about, is the place to go because there was, everything else was restricted. And here we are, so I'll probably be supporting the override, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. You know, this whole process and the way this veto is going is extremely discouraging because I think it lacks the integrity of people voting in council as well as having, you know, the executive branch and being in a position where if the people, and we know in real life, being residents of Lansing, need a warming and cooling center to save lives, that should be at the forefront if that's what the people want and wanna make the sacrifice. And so for me to see us fighting for a basic need really is, is very disappointing because I know that's not the heartbeat of who Lansing is and who we are as a community. So that, that, that right there, I just can't even believe that's, that's a topic and, and going back and forth, as well as accessibility. So if we do have the Senate come with 800, it's for a center-based, can everyone get there? So we've talked about it, it's very basic, you know, and that's something that's so important, and we do know it's gonna be winter and hot. And, you know, God bless our souls because these are people's lives. Secondly, I think that being in the community as an at-large member, going to neighborhood meetings, constituent meetings, talking to everyone, they, you know, and then of course, you know, we need to make adjustments, nothing personal towards anybody, but if we are, if we have a structural deficit and we've asked the question, what is the strategy prior to my time on council? We, they've approved a chief strategy officer to look at the financial health, and we do not have a strategic plan and a way forward, then we need to, as we look at that, and it's said that they're putting it together, that's great, look at how can we make cost savings measures to be responsible? We've been voted here to, to do that. And so the way that it sounds like, from my understanding, with everyone being recused, we really don't have an opportunity to really even, you know, have a supermajority to override what we already approved. And therefore, if the people are speaking and say that we want to, you know, have, you know, budget cuts in, in the administrative office, nothing personal, because we feel that we've built it up with 3-1-1, we've done these other measures, we have a new Neighborhood and Citizens Engagement, Citizen Advocate, and all these positions, and we say that's where then the community say we wanna, you know, trim it back a little bit, not going after anybody personal. If we are having, you know, things vetoed, then it really, for me, is saying, well, what's the purpose of hearing the community and the voices of everyone saying, this is our taxpayer, this is what we would like to see if we have to be responsible, this is the way that we do it? And this up here, it really seems like, you know, that possibility to institute what the people and the will of the people is, is not giving us a fair chance. When I look at, from Emily, the internal auditor, and it says, both councilmember Cost amendments affecting the mayor's personnel and operating budget have been reversed in the veto, it's everything that we discussed is now being reversed. So basically, why am I sitting up here? So I, I just believe in, in having, you know, the way the system's set up, work within that, follow protocol and have integrity. And so this whole process and the situation that I'm sitting in now is discouraging, and we really need to look at that internally as ourself and as a community when we make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Cost and Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood. I have a question for the city attorney. If we override this veto, the $1.9 million or 1.8, does that go into the general fund? What happens with that money?
The veto effectively just, the veto override would just eliminate the veto, so it probably goes into fund balance, yes. We have to ask our finance people, but no. It's not allocated. It's just not allocated.
So we would have to appropriate the money?
Somewhere.
Okay, so.
And, and just for clarification, the mayor makes the recommendation for appropriation and then we would?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes, I understand, yes.
Giving you an example, you've got rainy day fund ordinance, you've got stabilization fund ordinance, I think.
Yeah.
Then you have the, just the, the general fund balance. But it has to be a, a recommendation and an appropriation.
So if, if our vote to override this is not going to allocate any funds, I, my question would be, and in all due respect, Councilmember Spitzley, I don't think that there would be a conflict there because you're not voting, if I, if I'm understanding you correctly, city attorney, we're not allocating any money so that, there's no money that you're going to benefit from in any way, but we will deal with this at a later date, what the mayor would propose, and then we would vote on that, correct?
That's correct, and a future appropriation, I think what, and I'm not gonna speak for her, but what I think I understand her to say is, she recused herself and was voted as a recusal on the original budget, if I recall. And that this would be, just be a, a follow-through on, I don't wanna speak for you, but it's my understanding.
Are, are you done? Or, Mr. Cost?
Yeah.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Well, if that's the case, then Councilmember Wood doesn't need to be recused as well. I mean, behind that same, this is, see, this is, this is the slippery slope we're on right here. You know, you, you, you know, I've asked, you know, on a budget, I've been recused for eight years. Now, we're at this point where there's been a political move. If, if, if we're going down that same path of logic that Councilmember Cost did, then Councilmember Wood shouldn't have been recused either because this is just a perfunctory thing. So we're either recused from the budget or we're not. So I was recused from the budget, now I'm unrecused from the budget, which is fine, which is fine. My issue, as, as, my issue continues to be, you know, if, if the budget is upheld or the veto is upheld, my warming centers lose. If the, if the veto is overridden, my warming centers still lose. Because instead of using that 1.9 million to shore up the mayor's budget, which he could have, he could have. My warming, or he could've, in that, in his veto, he could've set aside money for my warming center, for the city's warming center. I keep saying my warming center, it's not my warming center, it's the city of Lansing's warming centers. He could've done that as well. So, you know, we talk about, you know, what the priorities are, and that's, to me, that's a blatant example of what our priorities are. That money could've been used to shore up his budget and keep my, keep my, keep the city of Lansing's warming centers. And that, that's just, that's just reality. So here I am now, I'm, I'm the one that, you know, I'm sitting here, and I feel like I've been thrown under the bus because for the last eight years I have recused myself from the budget, but, you know, it is what it is.
I think the city attorney had wanted to-
I just wanna follow through on that last question that I was asked. If the veto, the veto allocates the money, if the veto is overridden, it becomes unallocated money. That's where the difference between the two.
Okay. So I have Councilmember Hussein and then Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, and I, and that's what I just, I wanted to make clear. And, and so I appreciate that because I wanna make sure that folks, you know, that are in the sky's falling camp truly understand what's going on here. So if we, if we override the veto, the reality is that this mayor is going to come back with a recommended appropriation of $1,857,670, uh, $67. And so the way that he backs essentially these dollars through this veto into these operating budgets is still going to happen. What we're really talking about is whether or not we want to override the veto of $268,000 from the mayor, I'm sorry, being moved back to the mayor's personnel budget and $1,500 being moved back to the mayor's operating budget. I mean, it, in reality, that's what we're talking about here.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, and thank you for that, Jim, as well as Lisa said the same thing, so it would not be a, a conflict or a recluso for any of that. And then what Lisa just indicated to me was, if the veto is overridden, and I'm just repeating, then this-
repeating, then this 1.9 would have to come back up in recommendation, where if it was HRCs, you could reclusive yourself, and if it was economic development, you could reclusive yourself. And then, we would look at that 1.9 separately. So, I'm in support of overriding the veto.
Councilmember...
Okay, because I need to be, I need to be clear. I need to be clear. So, if the veto is overridden, the money for my warming, for the city's warming centers stay, the 1.8 million becomes like a nebulous thing, and, and the mayor can allocate that back to the mayor's budget to fill his budget?
It would still have to come to council for approval.
Right, but he could allocate funds to, to, so, you know, it's, it's basically symbolic. The vetoes will be symbolic, because he will be able to backfill. But there will be money set aside for my, for the warming centers.
Correct, but, but again, he would have to bring it to council. He, he can't just put the money into his account. It would have to be approved by an up or down vote of council.
Well, I, I tell you what, if I've got to choose between, and I, I'm at this point now. If I've got to choose between my warmth, between the city of Lansing's warming centers right today, and voting for his budget two weeks from now, I'm voting for his budget two weeks from now.
Okay.
And, and, and I will call my trustee tomorrow and throw myself on his mercy about how I've basically violated my employment contract.
Councilmember Cost.
I'd like to call the question.
We have a motion to call the question. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And since I was recused, so it's seven, zero. Okay. Now, calling the question. All those in favor of the override, say aye.
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 All those opposed? So, it passed six to one. And this will be on the agenda tonight for the council meeting. Okay. Uh, where else are we? I've got to look at my agenda. Okay, that's it. So, we've got 15 minutes before the council meeting. We are adjourned.